Okay, I'm gonna start the meeting by reading the authorization information. As Chair of the Sanborn Regional School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note, there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are: A) Providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing for this electronic meeting, all members of the Sanborn Regional School Board, we're utilizing Zoom, excuse me, for this electronic meeting. All members of the Sanborn Regional School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number: 1-646-
Cory's the guy that's gonna fix it, right?
Yeah, but I don't know.
Excuse me. There's some conversation going on.
Yeah, Pete can't hear anybody. He can't hear anybody.
Oh, he can't hear anybody?
No, they're trying to figure it out.
Okay, thank you. If necessary-
Well, I can't hear anybody, so-
We can hear you.
I just muted him, so you can continue.
Okay.
Okay. So the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number: Meeting ID 989-4992-1270. Or by clicking on the meeting website address provided at the SAU17.net website. Just click on the upcoming meeting links. B) Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the Sanborn Regional School District at www.sau17.net. C) Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call 978-482-7394. Or email helpdesk@SAU17.net. If anyone has any public comment, please email the superintendent, D) Adjoining the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance with each member states their presence. Please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. So I'm gonna call on people as they appear on my desktop. Larry?
My name is Larry Heath, I'm in my workshop. There is nobody present.
Dawn?
My name is Dawn Dutton. I am in the basement, and my family is upstairs, not down here, no one is present with me.
Tammy?
Tammy Mahoney, I'm in my home, in a room-
And let's see, where are our- oh, Jamie, Jamie.
Jamie Fitzpatrick, I'm in my home office, I'm alone.
Pam?
Yeah, I'm Brown, I'm at home by myself.
And Pete?
I'm at home, and the boss is right there, she can hear everything.
Okay. Jim Baker, I'm at home, there's no one in the room. Okay, so let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance- To the flag of the United States of America, which it stands, nation for God, indivisible, and just for all. So, can I get a motion on the minutes of May 6th?
Move to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Roll call vote, Larry?
Yes.
Okay, Dawn?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Hi.
Pam?
Hi.
Pete?
Yes.
And it's yes for me also. All right. Matt, do you have anything on the distribution of the manifest?
No, all the distribution of the manifest are being done by email right now, and I'm getting well, via email, because we're in this emergency situation.
Did you get all the approvals that you need?
So far, I have, yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Tom, nominations?
Yes, I have- I'm sorry, for some reason I had a problem with my Google Docs, it's saying I need permission. Hold on just a sec, I'll get it.
I can read it for you.
Okay, I have it. I should read it, just for technical. All right, here it is. Nominations are Alexandra David, grade 2 teacher at the Baky School, Laura Austin, grade 2 teacher at the Baky School, Victoria Sers- I'm sorry, Sir Sossimo, Special Education Case Manager, Amy Bear, 5th grade teacher, these are all at the Memorial School, Alana Hagerty, and Lori Jamalowit, all at the Memorial School.
Okay.
Move to accept.
All right, can we get a second?
Second.
And any discussion? Roll call vote, starting with Larry?
Yes.
And Dawn?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
I saw your cat's tail, I thought your hand was up. Jamie?
Hi.
Pam?
Hi.
Pete?
Yes.
And yes for myself. And resignations?
We have two, Megan McKinnon, grade 2 teacher at the Baky School, and Jessica Bodderman, grade 6 ELA teacher.
Okay, can I get a motion on that? Okay, so, we got two there, Phyllis, we'll have to say, who was first for Phyllis's?
I think she might have gotten in under the wire there.
Who?
Tammy got it.
Okay. All right. We'll give in a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, vote, Larry?
Yes.
And Dawn?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Let's see, Jamie?
Hi.
Pam?
Hi.
Pete?
Hi.
And myself is also a yes. All right, Superintendent's report.
Great, thank you very much. Just wanted to let everyone know, in the public and to report back to the board, that members of the board, upon learning that input from the student council had not been shared with the board, encouraged the administration to continue working with the students before finalizing the graduation plan. Some board members asked that additional explanation be given to the students concerning their requests that were not possible, and why those requests were not possible. And the student survey was conducted back in early April, between two meetings that Mr. Stack held with the entire senior class council on 4/1 and 4/29 to discuss graduation. And I just want everyone to know that, you know, we have explained to the students that we are not able to, or we don't feel that it's in the best interest for the whole student body to put graduation off until August, because there's no guarantee there'll even be a graduation then. So we, Mr. Stack and I met with the students for three sessions, approximately four hours, between 5/7, 2020, and now. We discussed all of the issues and the reasons why many requests could not be met. And everyone wants a traditional graduation for the students, but we've come to the consensus that if we cannot have a traditional graduation, the current plan is the best option. We all agree that if the governor dramatically changes the social distancing guidelines prior to the end of May, May 29th, then we will, you know, if the governor changes things dramatically prior to May 29th, we're gonna look at this again. But May 29th and on, we're going forward with the plan that's been created. We did agree as a group, and the students were wonderful, by the way. They did a really good job of thoroughly expressing their concerns, asking questions, and getting clarifications. A couple of the students I'd never worked directly with, and I was amazed at what a great job they did. And I explained to them that we could make some changes. One thing that they wanted was to change the parking lot loops, so that the kids could all see each other, more kids could see each other graduating. The original map went behind the school and around, and that really set up a situation where the kids couldn't see each other graduating. So Brian came up with this really messy-looking map. He actually took a parking space and figured out the size of a square block, and actually mapped out every little one, yellow square is a car. It's a full size, it's to scale. So he figured out that he can get close to 70 cars to be able to see a student get their diploma. And the kids worked this plan out with him. We did six different models, I might be exaggerating a little, at least four, but probably six. We went around and around about how to make this happen, and the kids were great. So I think that the plan is available online, if you'd like to see it, and I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Stack, so that he can just show everyone the new map, so that they're aware of what's happening, and add any comments that he would like to add.
Hey, Brian?
Yes, am I unmuted?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you, thank you, Mr. Ambrose. I also have some of my other administrators in the team here too, that would be happy to weigh in on anything that might come up. But yeah, I think Tom really, really did a good job kinda outlining the basics. I'm just pulling up the map here, I didn't have that ahead of time. Let me grab it and share my screen. Sorry. Sometimes it's hard when you're working with one screen, there we go. Can you all see my screen now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so the big change that we made, there we go, the big change that we made with the really came down to the stage originally when we met on 5/6 was over here. And by moving the stage here to in front of the gym, that allows us to queue cars up through the parking lot here. And it looks really messy, but actually it's pretty clean. And I've had two different police officers actually drive it, and myself drive it, to make sure you can actually make all of these turns. So the idea basically be that we would bring all the cars in off the street from the parade, so that nobody's hanging out on 111, and they'd all queue up. And this first car would be stopped right by this stop sign. And then after that first graduate goes across the stage, the graduate would walk up here to the bell. The car would continue driving around, so that it's now over here at the second stop sign. And the student would get the opportunity to ring the bell. We would have a professional photograph taken of the graduate in front of the building, so they get like a really nice backdrop. And that's something that we would provide for all the graduates. Graduate would get back in their car, and then they would head out. And the kids wanted to have the option for graduates who didn't wanna leave the campus to be able to go back to the back of the line and watch the rest of their friends graduate. So the nice is, you don't have to do it. For those that wanna do it, it means that the last graduate to go across the stage will still have a crowd of people to walk across the stage in front of. And we've, you know, Mr. Dawson, Mrs. Levitt, Mr. Kay and I have kinda worked through a scenario where we can have a couple of students staged, ready to go on stage, and a few students here, so we can keep it moving. Because we still believe that's the goal of this, is we don't want people hanging out in their car for a long period of time. We're hoping that we- About 75 minutes, and try to average 30 seconds per graduate walking across the stage. And we'll have other things to do after that while the next one's walking across. So it should be a pretty tight, pretty easy to manage. Important to make sure that we're able, from a liability standpoint, practice all the social distancing restrictions that we need to. And of course, we'll be live streaming this, so that folks can watch from home, or from their cars, or from other locations.
All right. Looks fantastic. I wanna personally thank you and Tom and your team for all the additional collaboration. These revisions are even better than the previous plan in my mind. I think you've done a fabulous job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So there is also a number of senior activities that are being finalized, and they're being updated regularly. And all of that information is on the Sanborn Regional School District website at the high school, the middle school, and the elementary school. And I just wanna make sure that everyone remembers that on Monday, May 18th at 7:00 PM, the school board did host a, the school hosted a live internet broadcast of the annual senior awards and scholarship ceremony. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank Heidi Levitt, Mr. Dawson, and Mr. Krisonowski, and Mr. Stack for doing a fantastic job. I mean, these are really difficult times, and I really think that they went above and beyond to help our kids to feel special. And I had fun doing the meeting, I felt like I was on one of those Saturday Night Live Zoom skits. It was, you know, I'm trying to make the best of it, and keep it upbeat, but thanks again, Heidi, Brian, Bob, and Steve, thank you very much.
Okay. So, let's see, what do we get here? Oh, Tom, do you have any email that you wanna?
Oh, thank you, I have not received any public comment emails, thank you.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna move on to committee reports, and I think Policy has a report, Pam?
Just that the next meeting is June 3rd at 4:45.
Okay, and Tammy, you had a meeting today, I think?
We did, the Excellence and Student Achievement Committee met at 4 o'clock. And it was kind of a short meeting, I was selected to chair the committee again, which I'm happy to do. We talked a little bit about our goals, we will probably continue, most likely continue with the goals that we adopted back in November. We're still sort of underway, got a little bit remote learning. And, but we'll talk about them a little bit more, we are going to have another meeting on June 17th.
Okay, and Facilities is next. Facilities met on May 6th. We began the meeting at 3:30 PM. We reviewed and approved the meeting minutes of Wednesday, April 29th, 2020. Thereafter, the committee analyzed and discussed the bids for constructing the middle school laboratories and the locker rooms at the high school. The committee agreed to report on the bid review and to recommend points north construction management to the school board that evening. The full report appears in the school board May 6th meeting video, and the details are also provided in the school board minutes from that meeting. The Facilities Committee adjourned at 3:41 PM, and the next Facilities Committee meeting is scheduled for June 17th at 4:00 PM via Zoom. The access details will be provided on the SAU17.net website, once they're available. So, Finance?
So I have a question, Jim. So I have approved minutes, if I can go through the proposed minutes, or do you wait for the approval?
For the meeting on the 6th?
For the meeting on the 6th, yes.
Yeah. The meeting on, I'm sorry, what's the status on the minutes?
So I've written minutes, they haven't been reviewed by the Finance Committee and approved. I agree, do you wait for their approval?
Okay, they don't need to be, this is a report to the school board?
Okay.
So you don't need approval? This is just your report as chairman?
Okay, then I'll go through the minutes here.
Thank you.
The meeting was held on May 6th. Chair Fitzpatrick opened the meeting, read through the checklist. Attendees were myself, Jim Baker, Ms. Dawn Dutton, Mr. Matt Angel, and Superintendent Tom Ambrose called the meeting to order at 4:22 minutes unanimously. Reviewed the trust fund balances. I'm not gonna read through the numbers, but I've got the numbers in the minutes. But basically, the expendable trust is about $240,000 and change. Capital reserve, $173,000 about unanticipated expenses. Capital reserve about 75, and facilities about 192. Discussion on the future balance, recent funding increases resulted in the following clarifications. The recent increase in the funds were pursuant to a 2019 warrants, the 2020 warrants, that had $75,000 to the Unanticipated Educational Expense Fund, and $50,000 for the Facilities Use Revolving Fund. Will be funded after June 30th, 2020 date, as required by the warrant. Expenditures, monthly health insurance statement will be showing, was showing $403,000 roughly in unexpended funds, monthly health, non-health insurance, showing roughly $1.5 million in unexpended funds. Mr. Baker pointed out, there was $100,000 reduction in this in the last month from ordinary expenses that were still occurring. Combined, we were sold approximately 1.9 in unexpended funds. Revenues, $2,055,000, of which 1,014 is from use of fund balance. Fremont tuition bill, still to be billed, was $961,000. Mr. Angel believes that we will meet our projections. Mr. Baker asked about outstanding invoice on Fremont tuition. Payment was due this week, it was not collected at the time, it has since been collected. I'll just add that. Outstanding accounts receivable was $4,757. Remaining payments from the towns of Newton-Kingston and Fremont. New accounting software, Mr. Angel is reevaluating, how do we do timesheets and attendance? Not sure what he needs to get on the new system yet, in terms of replacing the old one and what stays. Mr. Angel also wants to make sure includes a portal for taxpayer access. Leaves also future costs of this, and likely will have to stay with the current timesheet and attendance systems. Superintendent Ambrose stated he wants this available for administration to be able to work on during the summer. Mr. Angel was requested to provide schedule, which shows what is the cost to install, what's the annual cost is, what is the current cost, what is the difference of these two, and what are the costs on thirty options, A, B, C, et cetera. Mr. Baker had questions on subheadings in the agenda. 200 gig of storage, will this be sufficient, or will it need to be updated? Mr. Angel said the future, say five to 10 years, would not be enough. We either have to buy more storage or purge old data. The current server we have is about seven years old, and Mr. Angel stated his belief that this is about the usual life of a server. The site assessment was listed as not applicable, and Ms. Dutton pointed out that the options are either not applicable or included, so appears the needed content manager is not currently in the quote. So Mr. Angel's reviewing that. Cost estimates for the six remaining projects, the roof repair, that quote was already approved, that's about $54,000. The memorial entrance, the architect is reviewing and sent a sketch in the drawing. Mr. Angel shared the sketch online and confirmed he's trying to do this primarily house. Superintendent Ambrose quoted the architect as saying it should cost less than $60,000. He then pointed out the original quote, when Tom first arrived, when Superintendent Ambrose first arrived, was $250,000 estimate. We're now looking at a solution that is $190,000 less, and provides more space for the students. Mr. Angel expects work to be done in the July. Paving at the high school, Mr. Angel shared the plan for the high school parent pickup loop. Ms. Dutton had questions on cars backing up and traffic control, to manage the process. Signage requirements were also discussed. Mrs. Dutton pointed out need for someone at main entrance directing traffic at the end of the school day. Superintendent Ambrose pointed out that yes, we will have somebody there. Mrs. Dutton pointed out that with the new reorganization of the schools, we also need signage at Memorial and Baky. It was agreed, yes, we're gonna need signage at both of those schools for the new parents coming into those schools. The other three items, water for science, middle school locker, and middle school bathroom were just approved in the Facilities Committee. That was about $210,000. Bus company costs, Superintendent Ambrose negotiated with the bus company to achieve a savings of $44,760. Chair Fitzpatrick asked what percent decline this represented, and Mr. Angel identified the savings at about 20%. The phone system, Mr. Angel explained the existing phone system cannot support two different entities in the same building. Proposed system allows 9/11 calls to be directed right to the classroom. This also allows phone number to be, to forward direct to the computer. For example, a school phone number will still work well at home. The quote on this system is $46,258. Other items, Mr. Angel listed other projects that he is working on. Chair Fitzpatrick pointed out, these are not the critical items, they need to go to the Facility Subcommittee. Spreadsheet review, total review of the year-end position. Chair Fitzpatrick asked about getting the total cost and revenues put together in a spreadsheet for final review in the next meeting. Chair Fitzpatrick will review meeting schedule for the balance of the year with Mr. Angel and Superintendent Ambrose to outline the agendas for the coming meetings going forward. Mr. Baker requested as much financial information as possible, and the meeting was adjourned at 5:00 that afternoon. What I will point out is, there is, will be on the 27th, I just gotta finalize with Matt, the timing of the meeting, be it 4:00 or 5:00, and then we can get that posted. And we're also set up tentatively to have meetings not just on the scheduled 6/3, which is already scheduled, but potentially also 6/10 and 6/17, as need be. Again, we'll lock in that time at either 4:00 or 5:00 because we're gonna need more than just the scheduled meetings, everything going on and working with Matt, so we will get that posted as quickly as we can. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Larry, I think you Public Relations had a meeting on the 13th?
Yep. Meeting was called to order by Tammy Mahoney. Tammy also read the right-to-know checklist and the state of emergency statement. First order of business was the election of the chairman, Larry was elected as chair. Tammy will continue to keep the community up to date on the school board business, on the social medium, networking. Discussion on this year's goals, and it was decided that the committee with the school board would send out four letters this year to the newsletters and to the public. The first letter would be on the budget, second one on the school opening letter, another letter on the SCL, and we have one left open for discussion later. We're looking for ways to improve the annual report. And Dr. Brown volunteered to write the letters for the basic review. And we would like this letter, when we send them out, to be from the public, from the public relations, and from the school board, and have everybody sign them. Meeting was closed at 4:45. Next meeting is on 6/10, if we have it.
Thanks, Larry. Personnel, I think you had a meeting today?
Yes, Tom is trying to get your attention.
Oh, Tom, sorry, thank you, Dawn.
Sorry. I just wanted to thank Mr. Krisonowski, Mr. Dawson, and Heidi Levitt for joining us. They can, they don't have to stay on for the rest of the meeting. I'd just like Mr. Stack to stay on, in the event that the board has any questions about the phone systems at the high school.
Okay.
Hi, guys.
See you, see everybody?
Thank you.
Thank you, zoomed out, they're zoomed out, I wanted to give them a break.
Yeah, really, I bet, thank you all.
Appreciate that.
Okay, we're all set, so Dawn, do you have a report, or do you wanna do it next week?
I can give a quick little report. So we met today, Personnel Committee met today. I was nominated as chairperson. And we discussed some possible goals for our committee. We need to get a little bit more information before we fine-tune what we want the goals to be. And as soon as we have those set, we will, we will report back on those. And our next meeting is June 17th at 3:30.
Okay, thank you. Did I miss anybody?
Jim?
Yeah, Pete?
Just a little clarification, Dawn was nominated and elected chair.
And elected, yes.
Okay, good. Dawn, will you let Phyllis know, so she can add that to the committee list on the website?
She's on the call right now.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, okay, good, okay. Anything else, anybody else, did I miss anybody? Anything else? Anybody else? Did I miss anybody? Okay. All right, so. Dr. Haynes, we've got program assurances for CARES Act funds.
Yes, so just just to bring us up to speed on where we are with all these things. So back on March twenty-seventh. President Trump signed into law the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act. The acronym boils down to CARES and that act provides funding and flexibilities for states to respond to the COVID nineteen emergency in K twelve schools. The bill included a stabilization fund that provided thirteen and a half billion in grants to states across the country. And those funds were distributed based on how the Title One funds are distributed to states with the same formula was used. And each state got the same portion allocated to them. So the general assurances that you all have in your packet are the general assurances that are related to the CARES Act funds that are going to be. Released to Sanborn as part of this law. And New Hampshire law requires us to share these assurances with the school board because every school district needs to sign them. And this basically is assuring the government that we're going to use the funds that they give us in accordance with the laws that are. Explained in the assurances and in the manner specified in the application we submit while when we're applying for the grant monies to be. Given to us in the district. So those are in your packet and those are going to need to be signed by both Superintendent Ambrose and Chair Baker. So that would be the CARES Act assurances. There's also another set of assurances that came along. This week and I figured I would just address all those at once and those general assurances are for the regular federal grants that we receive every year. To cover Title One, Title Two, Title Three, Title Four, Title Five and the IDEA Grant for Special Education. And again, the purpose is the same to assure the government that the money that they give us is going to be used in accordance with laws. And that we're going to spend them on the things that we say we're going to be spending them on as specified in our application. And so we're sharing those with you as well because those need to be signed by Superintendent Ambrose and Chair Baker.
Thank you, Dr. Haynes.
You're welcome. I just say one thing, Jim, can I?
Sure, Tom.
I just wanted to mention that sometimes people ask. Why do you need a curriculum director? And I want to answer, I want you to see that managing these grants is a huge part of Patty's job and responsibility. And I know that it seems like she just said, oh, there's some stuff in there that Jim and Tom have to sign. They're huge documents and they're very, very technical and very important. And it is a significant amount of work for Patty to manage those. And I just need to express to the board that I I trust her completely that those are done well. Right? I don't have to worry about it. It takes a huge load off me and she does a fantastic job with it. So I just wanted you all to know that it may seem like a simple couple minute update to the board to sign these things, but. Managing those grants is a significant process and I'm really grateful for her work and also Marie Mundy who handles the. The fiscal component of it. She does an amazing job too, and they're a great team. With this, this, there's the billing part and then there's the management and the use of funds part and it really is a team effort. So thank you.
And also also. Does Title One, who takes care of IDEA, so we're a great team. We're an awesome team.
Thank you.
And that's only a tiny, tiny part of Dr. Haynes's job, so.
Exactly.
Okay. So the next one is school board self evaluation and Pam, that's so. That's your department, I believe.
Yeah, so I produced a one-page draft summarizing the three board goals and what we've accomplished this past year. Board policies require that we do a self-eval every spring. So I just itemized what the district collectively has accomplished and. It's just summarizing everything. It's. Not that controversial, but we should, we have a lot to be proud of. We've done quite a bit of work this past year. And we do need to modify the draft since we do have a signature from Chinburg Properties now. For the seminary building, so instead of the sale agreement has been drafted, it should be has been signed by Chinburg. On that one-page draft, the the three goals we had this past year were reconfigure grades pre-K to six and move grades seven and eight to the high school. Goal two formulated task force for facilities to expedite the elimination of unwanted excess properties and buildings. Specifically, the middle school and the old high school campus and three, complete the twenty eighteen nineteen goal of mapping outcomes. And explore report card options. So those were our three goals and we basically completed about ninety percent of those goals. As far as the third goal, mapping outcomes, we have assembled data on student indicators, so that's part of the map mapping process. But that's not quite finished yet. So I present this self-evaluation for the discussion and approval. If you have anything to change, that's fine. It's just something we need to do every spring.
Can I get a motion on approval? Okay, in a second.
Second.
And any discussion? Jamie.
I just wanted to say thank you for putting it together. It it read well and I didn't really have any any particular changes to it, so thank you.
Anyone else? Tammy.
I wanted to thank Pam for working on this. It was, it looked like.
It's the least I can do.
Yeah.
Everyone's doing something, so.
Some work and it was well written and, you know, I thank you. It was a really good document.
And we need to start thinking about goals for our next meeting for the coming year.
Okay, so. Let's let's do that. Let's put together our goals and. In our own minds and then we'll be ready to discuss them at our next meeting if everybody's agreed to that.
Should we have a vote on approving the draft?
Tom had his hand up.
Yeah, Tom. Tom.
Thanks, Jim. You sounded like my dad calling me in for dinner.
Okay, well, I'm I am that age. I might even be older than your dad.
I just wanted to take a moment and say. That it was a bittersweet feeling to sign the purchase and sale of the seminary with Mr. Baker. On Tuesday without everyone being together.
Right.
We have worked so hard and so so focused. To do everything that we've done in one year. When we set a goal of getting something on the ballot for the seminary. Last year, I thought in the back of my head, oh, boy, right, like this thing is. Tricky. And I thought we'd be in a three-year process. And I I can't, I I'm so happy. I I don't, there's no words to really talk about what an amazing. Achievement this is that that building is under contract. I mean, it's a big process and it's nowhere near over, right? But the fact that we signed a purchase and sale for the seminary yesterday is massive and I just. Wanted to just pause for a second because we're not together and it's so hard to. You know, ninety percent of communication is nonverbal, so you get thirty percent of it on a Zoom call. Right? So I'm pausing everyone and just saying, just really think about what we've achieved this year. It's amazing. Thank you.
And. For myself, I want to thank Tom for the extraordinary job that he did working all the details out on that, which was a very complicated deal. And, you know, as part of a big puzzle that's going to free up. A bunch of money that we can put into things that are that are much more needed. Just as the lease of the middle school is is going to do that and the consolidation. So. A big, big pat on the back, Tom.
Thank you.
Pam.
Let's acknowledge past board members since the seminary task force was in. Meeting for a few years. Mr. Mason, Ms. Alessio and Ms. Glock, we had several people that helped. Bring this together, so was a multi-year project. Thank you.
It's gone on for decades. Thanks, Pam. Okay, so is there any other discussion on the motion to approve the? The dread, the write-up that Pam did on our on our meeting our goals? Okay, thank you, Pam. That was a good, great job. So let's vote on that, Larry.
Yes.
Okay, and Dawn?
Yes.
And Jamie, oh, Tammy.
Yes.
Jamie.
Hi.
Pam?
Hi.
Larry, Pete?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. All right, so. Matt, the phone system for the middle school and high school.
Great. So over the past six months or so, the. And I'm trying to pull up information here. The IT department has gone through a bid process to select a phone system for the high school. And the middle school. The problem that we're facing with the transition of the middle school to the high school. Is that we now have two entities inside a building. One entity being the high school and the second entity being the middle school. And both of those entities require. Two ways of receiving phone calls. You know, they they require a switchboard. They need to be able to independently page within their system and 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 have. Essentially two separate pipelines going in and in and out of the building. However, they still need to be able to communicate between each other. Our current system is not capable of doing that. Now, if we start modifying our current system, we're required to upgrade the whole thing. Because it does not comply, our current system doesn't comply with current E nine one one rules, meaning that. Right now, if someone were to dial nine one one in the building, the nine one one operator would only receive the floor that the phone calls being. Called from under the new system or the new building codes. They're required to pass off the room number. From where the nine one one call was transmitted from. Brian, did I? I don't think I missed anything on that synopsis. Oh, you.
Thank you. I was waiting for the man in the Red Sox to unmute me. Yeah, you you covered it. The phone system also ironically controls our paging and our bells. That was the other issue is we can't parse out. And have two separate schools using two separate systems the way that system is designed and and the system is. Is really past end of life. We we should have gotten about ten years out of it. And we have started to have some phone issues this past year over the last couple of years. There have been a few instances where the entire building is down with phones and and folks have had to come out to work on different pieces, so. The system's definitely served us well and it's done its piece, but but really Matt hit the essence. It's it's that ability to parse it out in the two operations that we need.
Okay, so the the bid proposal was sent out publicly. We had a few respondents. It was narrowed down to two of them. The first one was NTT and the second one was TNT, so it was kind of confusing because the. The names were pretty much similar. The initial proposal came in at fifty-six thousand five hundred for NTT and forty-six thousand two hundred and ninety-one for TNT. However, we felt that NTT had a better product and better service and we negotiated them down to. I gotta pull up the document. Forty-six thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Did you repeat that, Matt?
Forty-six thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Okay, well, good, good job negotiating there. Okay, and and all the work that went into specking that system and getting the bids. Any discussion on this? Jamie.
Yeah, I just a few comments to make. So I was one of the ones asking a lot of questions about this. I had not anticipated this expense. And I was concerned that we were spending money that we didn't need to spend. And so they they, Matt, Tom, stepped me through the things that Matt just pointed out. In in effect, you cannot have the separation that we want and the bell system changes that we want and everything else. As part of keeping the students in a separate entity and a separate system with a separate area. Without doing this, although we're not anticipated, that's what drew up a lot of my questions. But they have helped me to come to the conclusion that. You really can't have the the proper functioning of the. Of the reorganization that we have. Put together without this, so I am supportive of it. And I also like the fact that it also has scalability possibilities for when we have to do something in the other elementary schools, so there's a.
Yes, that's a good point. That's right.
So anyways, I just wanted to say that I was probably one of the holdups here asking a lot of questions because I was concerned as to. Frankly, unneeded upgrades and I've been convinced that I was mistaken.
Tom.
I just wanted to to Jamie wasn't on the board when this happened, so I just wanted to also. Say this for the community in case they don't don't remember. We did put upgrading the phone system in the original plan for moving the middle school. That was in the, it's in the slide deck that I made in the first presentation. So although we hadn't discussed it in almost a year and a half and which would be. The whole time that Jamie's been on the board. I I just wanted Jamie to know that that, you know, he didn't miss anything. It just hasn't been talked about. Since my original presentation of the middle school move way back at the beginning.
Jamie.
Of course, I missed something. I was at all those presentations, no matter where I was sitting.
Ah, you missed something then. Okay, you missed something, but that's okay. Hey, catch them all.
All right. All right, so I assume you want a motion to approve this purchase. Is that correct? Okay, so can we get a motion on that?
So moved.
All right, Larry, in a second.
Second.
Dawn, thank you. Any further discussion? All right. Dawn?
I just was gonna say. You know, just so that anybody that's watching, this number is not as big as it sounds. We have a family business. We just changed locations and in January we had a new phone system installed. And when I saw this number versus the size of the building we have, which is dramatically smaller, I was like, wow, that's not bad. It's not, it's not, it's not a bad number. It's a really good number.
Thank you for that. Okay, anyone else? All right, let's have a vote. Larry?
Yes.
Okay, Dawn?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Hi.
Pam?
Hi.
Pete?
Hi.
And a yes for me as well, so the motion passes.
Thank you, everyone.
Yep.
Thank you, everybody. I'm going to zoom out now. I'll let you finish.
Bye, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. Certificate of authority for student assist counselor and that's Tom.
Yeah, the student assistance counselor, the certificate of authority just needs approval because it's a, the the state pays fifty percent of the salary.
Okay, so a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, all right, and voting starting with Larry?
Yes.
And Dawn?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie, you moved.
Dead, apparently. I.
Pam?
Hi.
Pete?
Yes.
And yes for myself. Okay, so decision on funding source for the memorial school roof. Tom and Matt.
At the last meeting, you guys didn't, while we asked for funding for the the memorial school roof. Current, the default is to the general fund, so right now I believe the fifty-four thousand dollar price to pay for the middle school roof. Is going to come entirely out of the general fund. If the school board chooses that we can withdraw the funds out of the the facilities capital reserve fund or the. Yeah, it's going to be out of the facilities capital reserve fund. And and in that case, if it comes out of the facilities capital reserve fund, it would preserve. Sign fund balance, which would be used to reduce the tax rate. However, on the flip side, we would have to replenish that capital reserve fund for the. Funds we use. So it's really up to this board whether they want to continue with the current funding through the general fund. Or to switch to capital reserve funds. And that's it.
Okay, can I get a motion on this to approve?
Well, you would have to specify in your motion.
Well, it's fifty-four. Oh, okay, yeah.
That you're going to be withdrawing the.
Yes, okay, so let's have a discussion. We can have the the motion after the discussion. So. We are going to be. we are gonna be getting a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year from the lease of the middle school that could go into this this facility revolving fund, is that correct?
Well, the facility revolving fund is a little different than the capital reserve fund.
Right.
The revolving fund can be used only for specific purposes. Um, I believe uh, it can be purchased by electronic purchases um, and some facilities upgrades. Uh, I'd have to double check, but I think you can use it for this particular situation.
Yeah, I mean, it's a roof.
Yeah.
Okay, that's just one comment I have. Um, but I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say. Pete?
Yeah, um, my concern is that we've talked a number of times about we're saving money, we're saving money, we're saving money, but we're also spending money, we're gonna have a discussion in non-public later on. Um, if we take the money from the general fund, that's money that will not go back to the taxpayer this year. If we take the money from the capital reserve, that's money that they gave us for the purposes that we're talking about tonight. And I'm concerned that we're, we're whittling away a little bit on the amount of money that should go back to the taxpayer. Because it seems that every time we turn around, we say, for example, well, we're getting a hundred and forty thousand dollars from the, from the, the middle school rental and we're saving money because this person isn't gonna be replaced and we're gonna, but when are we gonna start saying, we should start making sure some of that savings go back to the people? So when you're taking out fifty four thousand dollars, when you've got a fund that was set up, established and approved by the voters for these sort of things, and you say, we're not gonna touch that, we're gonna take it from the capital, the general fund, then why did we have the capital set up to begin with? There's no right or wrong answer to this. You could argue the other side, I've been arguing the other side in my head. Um, but I think if I, right now, were gonna say, which way would I come down on? I, I, I think it would be take it out of the capital reserve, that's what the people gave us the money for. Granted, we have to go next year and say, we want the money, but the reason we want the money is because we did what we said we would do. We spent that money from the capital reserve. So, it's just something to think about, I don't know what your decision's gonna be, how you wanna vote, but you know, unless somebody says something that I say, oh, I didn't think about that, yes, I agree. I think we should take it out of the uh, capital reserve.
Okay, next. Larry?
I've been talking to some of the people around here and asked them about this very question. And their comment was, well, we gave you a capital reserve fund, why are you taking it out of the uh, general fund? So, I kinda had to go along with what Peter says, the people that's been talking to me want us to use the capital reserve fund. Because that's essentially what they voted that money in there for, so.
Okay, anybody else? Uh, Pam?
I understand from the superintendent that we need to build up our reserves much more than we have already. But given the COVID virus situation and the fact that many people are underemployed now, I think it would be wise to use the capital reserve fund for this purchase.
I understand.
Okay, uh, Jamie?
So I was kind of arguing the last time we had this discussion, I was more on the other side of the, the fence. Uh, saying that, you know, we just had a uh, resounding vote in favor of build up reserves, build up the reserves. So I was concerned about undoing the reserves. Um, that said, I, I've taken into account that the comments that were made last time by uh, primarily Pete uh, and in the comments that are made here tonight. Um, and with the reality of the SLC money uh, coming in that would go into one of these funds, that will help boost it up also. So I, I have been swayed to the opinion that we should use the capital reserve.
Tammy?
Um, are, do we have two, so we have two options actually? We could use the capital reserve fund or the facilities revolving?
I believe we could, because it's a facility situation.
I verified it, yes, you can.
You can use either one? So the discussion is not necessarily centered on the capital reserve.
Correct.
Tend to agree with Pete, I was thinking, I originally thought um, the other way, as Jamie just expressed, I kind of, I was thinking we would wanna take the money, we could build up the reserves. But I was thinking about it and I, I do agree with Pete that, that really is the purpose of a capital reserve fund, that's how, that's how Kingston um, uses that money. So I would not want to take it out of the general fund, I would wanna take it out of one of those two, whichever, if there's advantage to using one over the other, I don't know. But I think we should talk about that, which, I mean, depending on however other people feel, but I think we should make sure that we have a discussion about which of those funds we would wanna use.
Okay, Dawn?
Yeah, I was um, same as Jamie and Tammy, I was originally leaning towards the other to try and continue to boost the reserve funds, because that's what it sounded like the people wanted. Um, but now that I'm hearing that there's an option to use either the facilities capital reserve or the other facilities fund, um, I do, I would like to get some more, you know, information. If we could talk about that a little bit more to determine which facilities fund to pull it out of. Um, and maybe, now I think we all kind of agree to nix the pulling it from the general fund at this point.
Now, I, I was, Matt?
Okay, so the uh, facilities um, capital reserve fund uh, comes from general taxation. Basically, there's a warrant article on it that, that the taxpayers vote on. And uh, they either use uh, year-end surplus funds or they use general taxation to fund it. The other one is the facility use revolving fund. And that is when we rent out a facility, those um, revenues are reserved for um, technology purposes um, and uh, repairs and maintenance to facilities. Okay, either, the, either three methods work well. The um, the general fund would um, i- if you were to use from the general fund, you would uh, you would um, benefit the taxpayers sooner. Um, if you use the facilities revolving, um, yeah, you would, you would drain that down a little bit. But we do have revenue coming in to um, help build that back up again. Uh, and then uh, the capital reserve fund, um, yeah, again, it would benefit the taxpayers sooner. Um, and the district would have to go through and justify to taxpayers to replenish that balance, okay? All three of those options are excellent and viable options. Um, it's really up to the school board as to the best um, method to choose.
Matt, a question on that. Why would the, taking it out of the capital reserve other than the facilities revolving benefit the taxpayers? Wouldn't they both benefit the taxpayers?
Yeah, um, both of them would benefit the taxpayers now, okay? So basically, the, the surplus that's being generated in the general fund would be returned back to the taxpayers as a reduction in their tax rate. Now, if it comes out of the facilities use revolving fund, um, uh, that's probably the best taxpayer advantage fund that we have. It's because those dollars are being generated through facility rentals.
Right.
Taxation, okay? Um, the capital reserve fund is either through out of people's pockets as they pay their taxes or through unspent funds from the prior year, which again, is from uh, people's pockets as they pay their taxes.
Yeah, and that's um, that's why I brought that up, the facilities revolving fund, because that is self-funding, it doesn't come from the taxpayers. Um, where the capital.
Taxpayer funds.
What's that?
It is taxpayer funds, all funds are taxpayer.
Okay, but it's not.
Source is not.
It doesn't come from taxation.
Yes.
Um,
It, it.
It comes from rents.
Well, y- yes and no.
And use.
Well, yes and no.
Okay, Pete?
You spend money, it affects the tax rate. So what you're saying is, because it's coming in from revenue, we spend it. But if you didn't spend it, it would go to pay down the tax rate, which would which, which, which would lower the taxes. So anytime you spend money, you know, it, it, it affects the tax rate.
I don't think that's the case with the facilities, but go ahead, Matt.
Well, no, it is, it is, because when you have revenue coming in, right, you've got revenue coming in, okay? If you don't spend it, right, it's gonna pay, it's gonna be used to pay down, or it could be used, depending on the vote, by the school board to pay down the tax rate, because you've got money. Or you can say, we'll take the money that the people have already given us by taxing them. But when you spend money, it's public money, it affects the tax rate. It, it's, it's it's kind of Atlantic to see it, you know?
Yeah, okay.
Matt, could you?
Yeah, Matt, Matt, could you explain that to us?
Or, or you agree or disagree with me, it's fine.
I, I partially agree. The, the general fund, any surplus in the general fund goes back to the taxpayers, okay? Capital reserve fund stay in those funds until the school board decides to spend the funds. Um, or the taxpayers rescind the authorization for that capital reserve fund. The uh, facilities use revolving fund, any revenue that is generated for um, uh, rental of the facilities is locked up in the facility use revolving fund, it is never used to reduce the tax rate.
But it, it can be.
It can be, the only way that it can be used to reduce the tax rate is if the taxpayers rescinded the fund at a district meeting.
But would, would you agree that if we spend money, it affects the tax? I mean, it, you know, it doesn't fall from the sky for us.
No, if, if, if you, if you spend money out of the general fund appropriation, it's gonna affect your tax rate this coming December. If you slip out of the capital reserve fund, it could affect your tax rate in the future. Um, but if you spend it out of the facility use revolving fund right now, it's not gonna affect the tax rate.
Alright, alright.
So is every, are we all clear on that?
No.
Tom?
Yeah, but how much is in each of the two accounts? So if we take a withdrawal, I just wanna understand the relationship of the amount of money in the two accounts, because I think the board is, although they haven't voted, they've come to a, a, a relatively clear consensus that we're looking at the two funds.
Yeah, the facilities use fund has a hundred ninety two thousand three hundred and.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, and the capital reserve has uh, oh, that's the education one, the capital reserve fund has the, has a hundred and seventy two thousand seven twenty eight dollars ninety one cents. So the facilities use fund is a larger fund and it's self, self-funding.
Yeah, so I, I, I would just say that if, I'll just throw my two cents in and then we can vote, because we have to go to non-public pretty soon. Um, I, I, I just wanted you all to know that, that we do have significant rent coming in from the rental of the middle school. So, it's easier to replenish the facilities use revolving fund than it would be to go back to the voters and ask to build up those reserves that I've been working so hard to build up so that I can pare down the budget in the way that Mr. Fitzpatrick talked about last year in November when he did a really great analysis of the budget. I mean, I, 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 my, my preference would be the facilities use revolving fund, but I'm fine with either one.
Yeah, I, I, my last two cents, I agree with you because it needs to be done, you don't know how the people are gonna be voting, so I gotta agree with you on that.
Thank you.
Where the money should come from.
Okay, so can we move the motion?
We need a motion.
Okay.
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we take the funds out of the facilities revolving fund to pay for the memorial roof.
Second.
Okay. Um, and a vote, starting with Larry?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Hi.
Pam?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
And myself is yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, medical supplies update. Tom?
I, I don't think there really is one, we're in the same spot we were unless Matt has an update.
Yeah, I have an update.
Okay.
So basically, um, our, our initial supplies are still the same as last month. However, we started uh, drawing down from the state for uh, those little surgical masks. Um, and, and we were getting about a hundred and fifty uh, on each request. Um, and what we're trying to do is, is if we have anyone enter the building and they don't have a mask, they can go and grab one from the supply. And hopefully, this will last for a couple of weeks. And it seems like the state is able to turn around this supply of masks pretty quickly. So I'm, I'm pretty happy with how the state is handling the mask situation.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
Right.
Um, okay, the next, uh, any suggestions for the next meeting agenda? We can take them now or you can send them in um, over the next week and a half or so? Um.
Do you have board goals you talked about?
We need to put board goals on, yeah.
Thank you.
Phyllis will get that, thank you, Phyllis.
Okay, the next Sanborn Regional School Board meeting will be held via a remote connection on Wednesday, June third, 2020. Please visit the sau17.net website for the links to participate. And uh, we're gonna go into a non-public session, Larry, if you'd read us in?
Sure will. Mister Chairman, I move that we go into non-public session for RSA ninety one dash A, colon three, Roman numeral two.
Okay. And uh, voting, starting with Larry?
Yes.
Dawn? Was that a yes, Dawn?
Yeah, sorry, yes.
Okay, uh, Tammy? And Jamie moved again. But you're there.
I'm just sitting here, I'm an I.
I guess, okay, Pam?
Hi.
Uh, Pete?
Yes.
And yes for me.
Mister Chairman, I move that minutes be sealed in perpetuity.
Second.
Okay, uh, Jamie?
Hi.
Larry, uh, Pete?
Hi.
Pam?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Tammy?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
And yes for me. Okay, so now we need a series of motions, the first one is.
Just a minute. Tom, that to me again, I just lost it.
Oh, yeah, sure. Hold on, I got my other.
The first one is for support staff. We can do the other one.
Yeah, go ahead, just keep going, I'll, I'll get this to Larry.
So we need a motion to raise support staff salaries 2%.
Mister Chairman, I move that we uh, give the uh, support staff a 2% raise for the year.
And that would be the non, can I just make an amendment, non-union support staff?
Non-union support staff.
Thank you. And uh, second? Second, okay, Tammy? Um, all in favor, Jamie?
Hi.
Pete?
Hi.
Pam?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Tammy?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
And yes for me. Um.
Jim, let me make this before we go any further.
Okay, yeah.
Mister Chairman, I move that uh, I respectfully request that the school board waive the ten-day investigation timeline for the period of remote learning due to COVID nineteen.
Could I just add for, for the one specific case that Mr. Ambrose requested?
Okay, uh, second on that?
Second.
Okay, and uh, all in favor, Jamie?
Hi.
Uh, Pete?
Hi.
Pam?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Tammy? Dawn?
Yes.
And yes for me. Now we need the um, the uh, the bullying policy, or no, you just did that one.
Yeah, the, the bid policy.
Oh, the, the, on the photographer, yeah, the bid policy.
Mister Chairman, I hope this is correct. I move that the bid policy be waived for this year's senior pitchers and only this year.
I, and also for the eighth grade celebration.
And also for the eighth grade.
Second, Pam, thank you. Uh, all in favor, Jamie?
Hi.
Uh, Pete?
Hi.
Pam?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Tammy?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
And yes for me. And the last one um, is Tom's compensation? The bonus, Tom's bonus?
I move, Mister Chairman, I move that since the superintendent has made all goals, that his bonus be paid before the end of the year.
End of the fiscal year.
Fiscal year.
Okay.
Thanks, Larry.
Alright.
Maybe second? Jamie seconded, Jamie seconded that one? Okay.
Sure.
All in favor? Jamie?
Hi.
Pete?
Hi.
Pam?
Hi.
Tammy?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
And myself is a yes.
Get Larry.
Larry.
Oh, sorry, Larry, you're hiding there. Larry, yes. Okay, thank you.
When Larry reclines, we only see like this.
The top of his head.
Thank you, everyone. Um, thanks for the great work today. It's, this has been a huge week.
All right.
The ink isn't even dry yet.
I know. Jamie?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to bring up a couple of items if, if everybody's got a few more hours. Um, I just like to discuss a few things and hopefully you can all hang in there.
All right.
I got nothing.
Okay. So we give the class clown a word through the end of the meeting?
Jamie gets it on this one.
All right. All right, everybody. See you at the next one.
Thank you, everyone.
You adjourn the meeting?
You're adjourning the meeting, yeah.
There you go. Thank you, Jim.